This meeting will come to order. Welcome to the December 9th work session. Tonight, Mr. Matt Brown will be leading us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Well done. Did you want to welcome our couple of principals here?
We do. We have Dr. Puitt is here with us tonight from Roy Waldron and Ms. Anne Haley from John Coleman. We were at their building Saturday, weren't we?
Yes.
Couple of principals. I think they have maybe an interest in the items on the agenda.
That certainly.
They have very small enrollments. There wasn't a student anywhere in sight.
(laughing).
How y'all manage that?
Maybe we've changed the schedule on Saturday. Was that what you were thinking, Mr. Jordan?
I'm sorry? Well, no, no. I think we're fine. It was a great tour so.
It was.
Absolutely.
Yep. We'll talk about some more here in a little bit, too, I'm sure.
I see David Lockett came in back there from campus school and he was in the paper and got to see the Orion launch at Kennedy Space Center the other night, too.
Pretty awesome. Glad to see you. Thank you for being here. Okay. Talk about the consent agenda. Any questions? Anything about the agenda? Now, here anything? Okay. We'll have some recognition Thursday night and the Christiana Middle School Choir will be here for the spotlight on education. And I guess we're ready for number nine. Mr. Odom?
Number nine is our five-year building plan. So let's kind of launch into that if we can, which was a carryover from our last meeting. You have two sheets. You have one, which is kind of the funding sheet, which is the colored one that kind of gives you an idea of the options there. The other one is just some building priorities. Now, there are 15 things basically that we've talked about. We had on the original plan. Now, what's missing from this is capital repairs. Now, the reason we removed capital repairs is capital repairs doesn't come from the fund that we do the borrowing. It's separate. And it was placed on there a number of years ago with the hope of maybe tying a capital repair or something, you know, to one of the other existing items. But we haven't used it in years, right, Jeff? I mean, I don't think we've tied anything like that in several years. So it's a little clear to the commission and people if we kind of take that capital. This is because that five cents and all comes from a different source. I mean, it's a different funding mechanism. So this looks at the building projects per se as they are. In looking at that, one of the first six items are really year one. So it didn't make a whole lot of difference. We can change the order around any way that you want to. Basically, the first six items on that is your year one funding. Now, here's something that's our concern. The year one, kind of this year and the start of next year, would be a little bit ahead of the judicial building funding that they're seeking. So that's why what's going to be on your colored sheet, the pink, the next year is less. If you bump down things to the next year, you're going to be trying to seek funding very likely at the same time they're going to want to fund the 72 million for the judicial bill in the parking area. So, I mean, better chance to let the county balance out some things with your priorities, I think, by trying to get in front of that issue because that alone is 72 million. So let's talk a little bit about that. So what I kind of did in the comments section, and then we'll go back and we'll look at the financial page, Oakland land for addition. The first three items are land. And we need to move on this. We need to try to get the commission to move on the first three items of land. We need to do the Smyrna land that you looked at, you know, a few weeks ago. Need to try to make that purchase. We need to go ahead and settle the Eagleville practice fields, that sort of thing we need to do. Also, we need to try to get secure funding to get the land at Oakland Middle before these lands are used for something else or something. So the reason I kind of list them as top priority because we're not talking about having to design, do other things, you know, in order before you do it. You just, it's a matter of purchasing these lands. Now, the middle school at Smyrna, as I've told you all from the very beginning, I'm so worried about capacity. If I take the current numbers and look at Rock Springs Middle with 1052, Smyrna Middle with 989, and Stewart's Creek Middle with 949, you know, it is very, very likely the funding for the middle school will go out over two to three years. We're very likely, as Mr. Cardy and I talked about this, I'm not sure we can get any. 2015 starts in a few weeks here before we get in before '17, the fall of '17. But if we need to get the upfront commitment from the commission, you know, to try to develop that, to try to keep from being on top of the judicial building thing, then I think we probably ought to take a look at that. But the payout for it and the payment of it is going to be over a period of time. You know, the land first. The other thing that we're talking about doing, Mr. Cardy and I and Mr. Sandvig talked about today, if you want to go ahead and move, if we think we want to go ahead and move on this Smyrna Middle land, we probably Thursday night may need to add another agenda item that allows us to begin core drilling and testing that land to make sure we want to purchase it, not caves or other issues under it. And those of you who's been on the board are familiar with that. We do that every time before we purchase land. And the figure you said probably to do that testing would be 20,000 or something, maybe? Which we might do some internal borrowing to allow that to go ahead and be done, you know, and then as the bond or something's done, the commission could pay us back, which we've done some before. But before you write the check for the land or you make the firm offer for the land, you want to make sure you can place the buildings on it, that there's not something structurally that would keep it from happening. The next thing, I think, with all of us and really one of the highest is the John Coleman addition. Now, we have the land already there. That's there. What we've got to do there is basically do some design fees thing. That's what's got to be done. So if we could move on that, we'd have to turn our architect loose. You're going to need to do some core drilling there, too. Or not. What do you think, because of where we're going with the John Coleman addition? We'll have to do some there. So that might, we might want to include that on there and maybe even the Roy Waldron piece. And then, of course, number six there is Roy Waldron, which I think is your top priority as we look at that, that we need really to begin to move for funding on. Kind of your progressive totals over there, you begin to see that 60 million that we're talking about when you take a look at that. As you go on down through seven through 15, again, the Oakland Middle, and we talked about this before, you now have 1045 at Oakland and Segal Middle is 1031. So we know out three years, four years out, we've got problems. There's no question about that. The Smyrna Area Elementary, remember if we purchased the land that you looked at, we were talking about purchasing enough land for the middle school and the elementary school. So why do people say, why do you need an elementary school in Smyrna? Because you got 905 at City Grove, 768, and how many portables at David Urie already? Five? Five portables at David Urie already. Stewart's Creek Elementary with 914, portable's there. And Stewart's Creek Elementary, I mean, Stewart's Borough, 914. Stewart's Creek, I mean, 887. I can tell you with all assurance, we're not far from an elementary school there. This is not something you can bump off for a long time unless you're going to be adding portables at these schools. Your problem with your elementary is a lot of them's a 1 to 20 ratio for the classrooms. You know, your K through 3 is 1 to 20, and your 4, 5, and 6, 4, 5, which covers is 1 to 25. So it builds the need for a classroom or space a little bit quicker than it does in the upper levels of the middle and the high school. The bleachers, I mean, that, we looked at that, you know, that issue. The David Urie renovation, which is a security thing. The Segal High addition, they already have seven portables there that they're using. But we had, when that school was originally built, we had them stub out the utilities at the end. And so when you look at stubbing out those two utilities at the end, it's a two-story addition that would produce six classrooms on the bottom floor, six on the top, which is kind of on the southern section of Segal, if you're thinking about that wing where it might be. And if you really wonder why that may happen, because if you look down the number 14, Blackman High already has 2036, Rivadale 1876, Oakland 2004, Segal 1792. See, we're talking about time out, four years, five years. You're getting out there towards several years away. So I mean, I think you can see why that, the Segal addition might help us to cover. The Laverne Middle addition, which is a proposal that we may need 24,000. The Muffsbury Area Middle School, my guess is for the new, for the next area. Blackman Middle, even with the addition we just completed, has 1,205. And Rock Vale Middle School has 952. If the area on Veterans Drive, which we wrote out that Saturday also, if that develops, and they were summed the other day, there's another one section approved there, when we start getting that towards year five and six and all, I'll be surprised if we don't have to have a middle school somewhere in that section. Of course, as I told the mayor when we talked about this, I said, we're pretty good at three years out. When you start getting beyond three years, it's driven so much by development. The high school, again, that one in Jeff's figure, you can see it goes out to kind of like 2019 or something like that. But again, you can look at the high school enrollment, see somewhere down the line that's got to happen. And number 15, again, elementary school in the Muffsbury area, you're not in bad shape at Walter Hill, Last Cast is Kittrel. You kind of got an arc there. You're having some capacity issues at Buchanan Elementary now. We used to have portables there and pulled them away. They're tight. If the city doesn't build something on that side or address it, it falls in our lap. But if we want to make a smaller number look there, you could certainly pull off item 15 off this five-year building plan, but I'm not convinced that it won't appear in next year's building plan. You know, and if we were to grow at 3% or 4%, it could even be moved up, you know, if the city doesn't do that. The city is telling me that they have over 900 at John Peter, you know, at their elementary. So you, I read this morning in the paper about Muffsbury's enrollment to double or something. Did you read that figure? So it's just how aggressive they are at beginning to keep up with that. But even if they double at their grades K through 6, we still going to have them 7 through 12. So, I mean, even if they do, we get a portion of that. So let's go kind of with that in mind. And the reason I really did it was to give the comments section so that you can see how many kids, why the school is needed. That's my purpose there, that you can see, which you already know, but others may not as we deal with this. Let's look at the, let's look at the building sheet, the one that's colored. And the blue one, basically, everything that's in blue, which is the 69, 110 there, Jeff has pulled together with some suggestions to begin the funding, purchasing the land, the design, that sort of thing. Jeff, do you want to try to, Jeff, Sandvig and Mr. Cardy and I worked on that. Do you want to go over this sheet with them? Be glad to. Why don't you talk to us about the sheet a little bit? This is the way he presents it to budget and finance and health and ed because their interest is in what year do we have to make this part of the purchase? So that's why it's broken down in columns.
Mr. Odom, is there any way, is there not any way for these diagrams to be presented on the, on the screen?
We could, I guess. I don't know who we can tonight. We don't have that projection camera up.
I could email it to you.
May be easy just to plug the camera in. You can feed it up over the end if you want to. I don't think it'll be a problem at this stage.
We don't really worry about the aesthetics right now.
No, we're not. We don't typically leave it there anyway because most of the time it's on our screen if we kind of budget times and things like that. And I've got a sheet here if you need that sheet. He does, doesn't he?
No pressure, no pressure.
(laughing). It's one of his boss over there. He did that quickly.
Sorry about that, Matt.
We have to focus just a little bit and be in business.
I think that's good. I appreciate you doing that. I just thought it would be helpful for the folks in the audience to be able to see what we're talking about, so. Thank you, Matt.
Jeff, you want to kind of talk to us about some of this?
This sheet y'all have seen before. The color, okay, when you read across like the first line that is mostly blue with one pink cell, that shows the components, our estimates, for that particular school or project. So middle school Smyrna area, a million six for the land, 900,000 for design, a million two for site work, 3,146 or eight for the furniture, fixtures, and equipment, which includes the, all the technology, library, books, things like that. The balance of the construction contract, 28,786,000, for a total at this, estimate at this point of 35,632,000. So you see that 35.6 million dollar project. What I've done with the colors, because as Mr. Odom said, the commission, the budget and health and education committees like to see what are we going to have to fund or agree to fund this school year, this fiscal year, for their, for their purposes. So the items in blue, in order to meet the listing on the uncolored sheet, those are the blue items. The blue items are what we would need to get funding, upfront funding for pieces of it. We might be able to do internal borrowing from, there are monies in the debt service fund that will be spent later, maybe next year. These, since we're dealing in multi-year projects, multi-year paybacks of debt, you have to look at it differently. So they will, they will want to look at how much are we borrowing or committing to borrow and then scheduling that borrowing in line with our projections of when we will be expending the money. So blue items, that is where, what we would need, that 69,110,000 is our estimate of what we need to have approved this fiscal year. And some of that would come up at the July, the July commission meeting, which is held at the end of June. And we would not necessarily have the county borrow it that soon, but we would have the legal authority. They would have approved that, yes, we will borrow this much money. And then Ms. Nolan, the county finance director, would work with the mayor, the commission, our investment advisors on the actual timeframe of borrowing. So our, from, and I apologize, I couldn't be here at the meeting where this was last They like to, there is, we only have a certain capacity for borrowing. I believe we're paying off about 25 million a year, and it may be slightly higher than that. We borrow on 20-year level debt. So at the end of that 20-year period, we have an asset, we have paid it off. We don't have any schools in the 40-year range that we're even talking about doing anything but maintaining. Pretty much, we often find alternate uses for some of our older schools, but we still have an asset. Blackman High, I was thinking of as I was driving in this morning, we borrowed for that in 99, in 98 or 99. So we're hitting the 16, 15 or 16-year mark. We've nearly paid off the debt. We have, at the end of that 20-year period, we will have an asset we will use for many more years. But Lisa will look at what we are paying off, given estimates of the borrowing rate, how much capacity we have at the current property tax rate. And that, that, I don't remember how many pennies go to education debt service, but, you know, will those pennies support this? So that's the direction the commission will go on it. So we're, we've attempted to show, okay, as, again, 69 million, that's going up a bit, we wanted to minimize what we were asking for in around the calendar year 2016 because of the judicial building. And then our numbers picked up again. The green number is 59.7 million. The yellow, bright yellow number is 41.4 million. And even though we aren't showing projects beyond those that would open in August of 2019, if our growth continues, other projects will be popping up into those years at some point, as long as our growth continues.
I guess, question I've got. This new sheet we got tonight, priorities. You mentioned we'd be looking at items one through six. I guess where I'm a little bit confused is which ones should we be looking at? 69 or 62 over there?
I think the 69 one, which is blue, which is the, because it has some of the other breakdowns on.
Well, I understand your, I understand your middle school. Smyrna, you get 34 million, oh, 32.
Right.
Taking out the land over here, but it's got to be bought, so.
Well, and that 69 million dollar number includes all of the blue cells. So going back to Smyrna Middle, that line that is mostly blue with one pink cell, that the 3,146,000 in pink for the furniture, fixture, and equipment would be, could be borrowed the next fiscal year. So the numbers in that rightmost column, it's trying to give Lisa and county government an idea of what the borrowing commitments by year would be in order to open these projects in the school years. We show everything as being ready in August of that school year.
Let me back up.
Okay.
Take the, you get 35 million on this sheet.
Yes, sir.
All that stuff. You're telling me that pink, that 3,146 is not included in the next year, what we're looking at for this coming year?
Right. Because that would be author, they would not have to go to the debt market for that until one year out.
I don't understand that.
Okay.
On this white sheet.
Right.
Going up at 34 million.
That's just project totals in the white.
Yeah. And. Okay. What Mr. Odom did, and I try to do it the way the commission is used to looking at it. Mr. Odom, if you look at priority number one, that includes land for the middle, and I think that's the difference, Mr. Hodge, that priority number one would be broken between the middle and the elementary school in the Smyrna area.
What you're going to have to take to the commission is this colored one that Jeff has got. I mean, that's just list everything that you have there, but you have to take the colored sheet because of the funding here. For example, on the elementary school, why are we saying upfront, the elementary school in Smyrna, if you're not going to build it immediately? Because when we do the pad and the preparation down there for the middle school, we need to do like we did at Rock Vale, we did at Stewart's Creek. While we had the equipment there, we went ahead and did the pad. So then when you actually get to do the building, that's already there, even though you're, you know, get that up front because when you move in there, to do the middle school pad, you do the elementary school pad, too. That's why he's broken it down that way. So, I mean, if you want to just look at the colored sheet, that's fine.
And these first six priorities are all equal priorities. So they're.
I mean, I, any way you want to look at it.
They're desperately needed, all six.
And I think we've got a better chance of getting them than we have waiting a year on some of those when the judicial building hits. That's my concern.
I mean, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I would possibly add another one, but I'll just deal with that later. But I'm just looking at progressive totals when, you know, that's what, where I'm trying to figure out. If you start to look at these figures right here, you can do some basic math and better be able to figure it.
Because number eight, part of number eight would be funded early, actually, because of the pad development, that sort of thing in that area is what you got. So you, you know, the colored sheet is the one that would be, I think, the one we need to take the commission if you want to do it. Some of you mentioned presenting them, too. Two things, two different ones to choose from. Again, I think if you don't have the issue you have, if you pull something off, I just couldn't see pulling things off on this top tier here, the top group. But you almost got to look down to maybe that elementary school, which is like item 15, but on this one, you're kind of in your yellow colors and all for that.
Mr. Sandvig, you and Ms. Nolan, y'all have had communication as far as the, you know, what kind of room that we have?
She did ask, and since it had come up in public, I did send her a copy of what y'all saw at the meeting that I could not make. And so she has that. She has not seen, whatever y'all approve Thursday, I will send on to her. And then she'll, she'll start plugging numbers in. She will do the adjustments for elementary versus secondary money because remember, anything K6, we have to share with the city. They'll get about 16% of it. So she will increase our numbers by that. And then, then she will start getting with our investment advisors, Stevens, Inc., and start assessing what our capacity is.
Additional comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, I'm, I'm in favor of the kind of thing you've got so far, other than the Laverne and Smyrna bleachers. It's one of them deals, we just keep knocking back year after year. Yeah, I'd like to say, go ahead and include it and, and get it out of the way. That's just my, I guess you'd say wish, say we'll take care of that.
We have kicked that can down the road for quite some time, I think. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, sir.
I, I thought Saturday's trip to John Coleman and Roy Waldron was very fruitful. Had opportunity to look at the issue that they're confronted with on a daily basis. And I'm pleased to have Dr. Buett and Ms. Haley here tonight, in case anybody had any further questions regarding what we saw on the side of it.
Jordan? I'd put your assistant principal gave us the tour the other day, did an excellent job, and he covered about everything. We did ask him at one point there, how many classrooms that he needed immediately. He said three. And that he needed seven more, which a total of ten, which would replace the portables, which everybody on this board absolutely despises in various degrees. I think, we, I can say that. This, this plan, which not approved or anything, but this, and the drawings that we got a month ago, fifteen classrooms, teacher work area, storage, restrooms. That's some vision for the future, which I'm sure you're, know a lot more about than we do, as far as children that are gonna be there in ten years, or five years, or whatever. Is that enough? You envision that as enough? You'd like to think it was enough? Understood?
Atlas, but Atlas is a thing that's common, and hope, families and hotels and things like that, but I wanna say thank you to everyone for being a hands-on board and taking the time out of a Saturday to come down to, I know John Coleman and Roy Waldron, to see our meetings, because a lot of times it looks totally different on paper from what it actually is in real life. And I do appreciate it very much, and I know I speak for all, everyone in that area. So thank you very much. And I apologize for not being there, had prior commitments. We had a lot of activities going on that day at school, but I know I have a lot of teacher leaders, and Mr. Coulter is very capable and very, very committed to the Roy, and I just want to say on behalf of everyone, thank you so much for considering this. And it is a vision that I've had now for about two or three, four or five years, maybe, Mr. Clardy. I've been whispering in his ear, but I know everything is, the budget is tight, I know everyone is crowded and hurrying for space, and I just appreciate so much you just considering how to support this.
Also, that plan has a stage on it. It goes out the back end of that gym, she is all the time. And we had a portable one in the gym for a while, and then just workout and all sports and everything else was coming in.
Well, we had to, sorry to interrupt, but the real reason was because we grew to eight hundred and thirty-something students, and we had to start pulling out both sides of the bleachers to get them all in the gym. So, I mean, that in addition to the other things you mentioned as well, but it was a crowding issue that we had to remove that stage.
Ms. Zegel? I, I don't wanna, from the curriculum instruction side, undersell the need there for the additional space as well beyond that. They are a title-one school, and that title-one school's capacity is at a lower level of what the actual room spaces, because you, you have a large number of English as a secondary language teachers, and also have a large number of title-one teachers there, they're supporting the classrooms. So they use up space as well, so you can't just think about a kindergarten teacher or a fifth-grade teacher, so if you're building it just for enough of what we have now, when we've added three teachers there this year, just this year alone, with the growth that's required, there's a few things that a couple of people here may not realize. But we have to provide by state mandate, a comparable faculty and staff to non-title-one schools and title-one schools, and in order to make that ratio the same, sometimes you have to add those positions. And that will happen at that school, because it's one of those schools that are at that tightest ratio.
To a serious situation, trying to get the children in and out of the bathroom without wasting instructional time. Of course, not to mention the weather, and no one wants their child in the portable, so get empty calls at the beginning of the year with crazy excuses for their child not to be in the portable. And the safety is a concern, you know, the children walking across to get to the building, keeping the door locked, and having to supply a code and change the code so they can get in and out. There, you know, there's a lot of reasons that you may not, like Mr. Zegel said, you may not realize right off the cuff, but we need, we need this extension. I'm, I'm so grateful that you're considering it and pushing it up somewhat, because it's, it's a dire need right now.
Ms. Haley, I think we were probably most surprised by our visit with you and the, and the number of portables in the distance and and the waterway that the children have to walk through to get from the main building to, to all the portables there on the, I guess that's the west side of the building, so. But I, I think we were, we're all surprised at what you were dealing with also. So Thursday night, we are charged with, of course, we have, we have six, possibly seven immediate priorities that, that we would like to take to the, to the funding body. So between night and Thursday, we'll, we'll have to decide if we, if we go with this, with this sixty-nine, or, or add to, or take away. That's gonna be our decision from Thursday night, so. Are there any other questions or comment before we move on to another area?
Mr. Clardy?
Please, Lisa.
I just wanted to thank both of the principals again, and thank you for the time that you and your staff took to allow us to tour your schools on Saturday. I was, it was a very pivotal moment, I think, for me, having seen those portables now firsthand. And I do, and I wanna echo the concerns that, that I have coming out of that about the safety and the security of the children, especially when you're talking elementary, school-age children, having to walk out to those portables and having to send the children in to use the restroom, and, and again, the disruption to the instructional time is certainly a big concern, but to me, the safety aspects of it are particularly so, and some of those portables, of course, as we saw, were in, and I thought, very, very poor condition, and so obviously, from my perspective, I, I wanna see those, those two projects as much at the top of the priority list as we possibly can make them.
Some of them have just gotten old, older. Mr. Holliday?
A couple of things, let's talk about timeline first. If we were, as Mr. Hodge suggested, to move the Laverne-Smyrna bleacher circumstance up in priority, how quickly could we have that inhabitable? When could it be funded? When could we start on that? Mr. Clardy or Mr. Odom, do y'all happen to be able to hazard a guess when we could start that project?
Bleachers are stock-type items.
Right.
Little bit of design, dealing with the ticket booth and Rick and the.
Okay, let's talk real life. When could we have the money from the commission? Best-case scenario, they wouldn't vote on it, they wouldn't fund it before?
Dr. Baum told us that they were talking about doing a borrowing in April, if you remember.
So, May.
Quickly after that, do you have? I don't know.
If we're gonna move that, I'd like for the presentation on Thursday evening, if we're gonna move that up in priority, then let's move that up in priority. And, and show that not as an August seventeen completion, but as an August fifteen completion. Or even if we have to say September fifteen completion, you know, or something like that. If we miss a deadline, we'll forgive you. The other thing is, I have looked and looked and looked at school population and such. I cannot disagree with you, Mr. Odom, we gotta have that middle school in Smyrna. You know, I would love to have the John Coleman and Roy Waldron impact ahead in priority of the middle school in Smyrna.
Well, I do think they'll be, but if we fund it all, I think they will be finished before you get to that.
But we can't, we can't allow for it to be anything other than an equal priority in funding, because the pad and the design and all those things, they gotta happen. And so I'm, I'm agreeing with you on that. I think perhaps, you know, in comparison to the two sheets, are we better advised, rather than putting a one-through-fifteen ranking, prioritize these as priority A, priority B, priority C?
I don't have to use the first sheet anymore.
At all?
It comes out, it comes out the total at the end of the five years, but because of pad developments and different years and things like that.
Okay.
When you put it on this colored sheet, it's different. So I don't, that was, I mainly wanted you to see in the comment section, the size of why we need it again. I know, I know y'all know that.
Yeah.
It may be better to take off the column called priority over there, and maybe show some of the commissioners, take off the cost piece, and just say, this is why we gotta have it.
Gotta have it.
This is, I mean, that may be, I'm just trying to help them understand, they don't do it every day.
Right.
Like you do.
Right.
About this, why it's so crowded, the other schools surrounding them.
I have gotten some feedback from county commissioners that one of the positive elements of this could be that we need to, we saw in our tour on Saturday, we need to retire, decommission, get rid of some of the portables. They need to go away. If we were able to reflect on here, and the impact not only would be this many classrooms, this many seats, this many dollars, but this many portables gone, then I think that there's a groundswell of community interest and support for ridding ourselves of portables. And I think that that is a, an appropriate thing to reflect in the presentation. I would hope perhaps we could include that in what we see Thursday night, so that when we adopt this, we send it to the county commission, and they say, by voting for this, I got rid of this many portables. I think that's an appropriate thing to help us for the community support.
Few other ideas, Mr. Chairman, and some additions. First of all, I, I, I absolutely agree with, I think, everybody here, but certainly Mr. Hodge brought it up about moving the bleacher, Smyrna-Laverne into our top priority list. I would, I'd like to see a plan that, that has that on there for sure. And I wanna make sure, somebody said something here just a minute ago, I don't remember who it was, that these are, are, are all priorities. All, and if we move the bleachers up, that would be seven things. And that, obviously, you've got to list them, I mean, you've got, you've got to come up with some order, you know? But that the first one is not necessarily more important than the fifth one, or whatever, that we absolutely need, need these seven items. Now, I, I, boy, I couldn't agree with Mr. Holliday more. If, if nothing more than a line at the bottom of whatever we present to Health and Ed that says, when this gets through, when we're done with this right here, we're gonna be able to put the torch to fifteen portables, I think, at your place, is that right? I forget what it was. Yeah, and, oh, twenty-two portables, which is like, well, it's getting pretty close to twenty percent of the total portables in the county at those two schools. I got a hundred and forty-something? And if we could tell the commission that that's going to happen, you know, with this, I, I think that's, I think that's very important. Now, the last thing I've got to say is not, is not as easy to, to state. It, it seems to me, this is, Mr. Sandberg, with all due respect, I know how hard you work, gosh, I, I'm also impressed. It, it's really not, not clear, I don't think, to me, although I worked with, this is my ninth one of these to kind of work with, although I do remember the days we had tears, oh my gosh. No more tears, I don't want any more tears. But, and neither does the commission, I don't think. But this figure is, it's, the final figure is too large. Now, of course it is, but we show almost the entire cost of Smyrna Middle School in one year.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you why we talked about that.
Well, I, I know you, I know you said that, well, the next year, the county commission's gonna wanna be borrowing for the judicial center, so we're trying to come up with a lesser figure next year, but I think it's enough. To let them know, say, now, look, we're, we're going to, we're gonna, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the Smyrna Area Middle School, which has absolutely gotta be built, I don't think there's any question. We're gonna get land, we're gonna get a design, and we've got, what you list here is a site fee, and et cetera, et cetera, but now the next year, the next borrowing year, after we, I mean, we don't even know if the land is good or not, we don't, today, we don't know that, it may be full of sinkholes, we don't have any idea. We may go out and look at ten more sites, we don't know. But anyway, my point is that we're not gonna need the bulk of this money for many, many months. And why show it on a borrowing plan? A commitment, yes. A commitment, I, yeah. I mean, sure, I mean, the commission knows that if we buy land, have a design fee and architect, we, we're gonna build a school, by golly, they know that. But to show, and I'm sorry, Mr. Odom, but to show millions and millions of more dollars like it's an immediate need, it's, if, if we're gonna show it, we gotta explain to everybody in the room that that's not borrowing for right now, that's a commitment for the following year.
Would you like us to roll that down to the next year, where that thirty-four, and add the cost of that? I mean, that's, it's probably gonna be there in two years, I mean, there's.
Sure.
Two years of it, actually. But I mean, that's easily done, and he's absolutely right, that's when it'll be spent. It's just, I don't wanna scare him to death when they add seventy-two million to the figure.
And Mr. Odom, you're gonna be selling it, you're gonna be standing in front of them, and, and you're gonna have to say now, you know, we're, we're, we're doing land, we're doing architect, we're doing a site fee, we're out there, we have looked at some sites, et cetera, et cetera, and it's our intent the following year to actually build a school. And I mean, that's, and, and this vote is a commitment, you know, for you all, that we're gonna do this. And then if they say no, well, we, we won't have any land or just design fees or site fees to have to borrow money for. Okay, I, I don't know what, how the rest of the board feels about it, but I, I may be off base here.
I think you're getting a lot of heads nodded.
We can do that. Well, we're, from what I'm hearing from you tonight, we'll move the bleachers and all up for this, to the first one. And then we'll take the, the actual construction costs the first one, and then we'll take the actual construction cost for the Smyrna Middle, and roll it down to what is kind of the pink area in yours and the other one. That will, that'll lower those first two numbers as they, but again, if they do, I'm like you, if they actually do the, say, purchase the land, they're gonna follow through, I think, on the building.
It will lower the current sixty-nine million dollar number, but it will take the thirty-four point seven million dollar number up, thirty-four point seven, to about sixty-three million.
Explain that to me. I'm sorry.
We'll lower our fourteen-fifteen approval request. We'll lower that by that.
To how much?
Twenty-nine million, but we'll move it to the, to the year we're currently showing is thirty-four point seven, when they're planning to go to the bond market for the Judicial Building, we'll be shifting it down to that year.
It'll bring it down to almost forty-three million.
Now, we're talking. And I realize, I realize, we're, I'm talking immediate, I understand, you know, and the following year, you're gonna have to pay the piper, and I, and I think everybody here gets that. But that forty-three million, sounds like to me something that I believe the county commission can, can absolutely deal with, is my guess, without, without looking at it with the idea, well, we're gonna cut some half of this, you know, and then John Coleman doesn't get what they need, and Roy Waldron doesn't get what they need.
You could add those other smaller projects on next year, then with those, and get a bunch of those those ways, and then the following year, come back and go for the elementary.
Okay.
Is that what I'm saying?
We haven't really, well, nobody's said anything, and, and about this necessarily, and I guess this, I guess that's good. I don't believe there's, is there any problem that anybody is, has, particularly with, with the John Coleman addition and the Roy Waldron addition, which are the two big items, I mean, I just, it's just obvious to me, and I assume it was to y'all. We were all there, and the county commissioner's there as well, including Rhonda Allen, the chairman of Health and Ed, and she'll be the first person, look at this, first person. Robert Stevens is there, of course, he's commissioner for your, for your school, I believe, and has children at both, I'm talking constituents at both, I mean, he is very interested in this, and others, but I hope these two plans that they presented to us here in this booklet about a month ago are accurate, because we're gonna end up with, I think, a lot of problems solved, if we can get this done. I'm sorry, I'm talking too much, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
I was just gonna suggest, maybe, if you're trying to lessen the burden a little bit next year, possibly on that, on the middle school there, split that total in half, you know, carry half next year, and then half the following year, just try to, I mean, if you could do something like that, but I think the way, the way the items are listed, I think each of them needs to be presented.
Eric, I don't think we could.
Anybody else?
Before we leave, so that we're, can kind of anticipate what we're gonna see Thursday night, I'm gonna second what Mr. Hodge just said, splitting that instead of a target of forty-three, maybe a target of fifty-seven, you know, with, with, with half of that funding shown. I understand what Mr. Sandvik, or, sorry, what Mr. Jordan is saying, thinking about the county commission wrapping their head around this, but that, that pink line, that's, that's Judicial Building. That's that, that's that year, right? That's what we're.
We think.
That's what we're suggesting. The balanced approach, you know, and yet, at the same time, we do a little bit toward the balanced and a little bit toward discretion for the Judicial Building. So, I could see that.
Jeff, do you under, Stan, see, I'm seeing, moving the bleachers up, I'm seeing possibly split that middle over two years for the construction, is that an issue with the?
Now, if we split that construction over two borrowings, basically, we're not going to, we have to time our payouts as the construction goes.
That's the city share one, too.
Yeah, and there'd be the city's share, too. So, that, we would have to be very careful in the timing, if we show it as a split. Normally, it's kind of, for a middle school, a high school being a two-year construction period, we could do that, but for a middle school, we, we, we would have to time the borrowing, basically, so as we're running down the first half, we would have to get the county to issue the bonds for the second half.
Eighteen to twenty months on a middle school.
Middle school's a year, but because of the way the funding will be falling.
Yeah.
We will do good if we can get the chunk for the site work and get it in, and then the next spring, have pad for both schools built, all the site, the sewer, the water, the gas, right there at the building, ready to go, all the roads cut and cleaned up and gravelled, and have that all paid for, and then have the money available from June to May of the next year to build the building.
Let's go.
I just wanted to remind everybody, I mean, I know we gotta work with the funding body, and we gotta, you know, try to work with them best we can about the Judicial Building, but our main focus here should be on what we gotta do for these schools. And these seven priorities here is where we need to be focused, and if we can work with the funding body with the Judicial Building, I'm all for that, but our main focus has gotta be what we gotta do for our schools and our kids.
That indicates a blue line of seventy-one million.
I mean, it is what it is, we gotta, we gotta deal with it.
Yeah, I just want us to, you know, see the right number when we come in here on Thursday in, on the blue line, and we've talked about a lot of different ones, and I wanna give staff clear indication.
Let me see. If you do, number one, is Smyrna land for the middle and elementary. You do number two, that's two point seven million, you do number two at point two eight five million, which is the Eagle practice field. You do number three, the land for the addition at Oakland, at six hundred thousand. You do the Smyrna Middle School site, that's two point zero million. You do the John Coleman addition, that's nineteen point eight six five million. You do the Roy Waldron addition, that's ten point nine seven one million. And then, number six, that's Roy Waldron, is four point seven two million. The John Coleman is the nineteen point eight six five. Then you come down to item nine, the bleachers and the concessions, that's another one point eight million. With those, that comes out at one, at forty-two point nine four one million. Okay? If you take the six hundred thousand off of it, for this, hang on a minute, the point six million, well, you'll be at, if you add that school back into it, then you're at seventy-three million. So, so you either submit forty-three million or seventy-two million, or you do forty-three million the next, the first year, do the other, the main construction for the building of the middle school, and then that will be approximately thirty-four million. Then you could go down and pick up David Urie. You could do Siegel High and the Lavern addition, borrowed with that next year, and that would kinda ease, that would put you back up.
You're postponing that.
Yeah, postpone the Smyrna Area Middle School, I mean, the elementary school, and push it down, pick up those small ones, then the next year, come back and pick up the Smyrna Area Elementary School at twenty-seven million, plus, you may even want to get one of these Murfreesboro Area Middle Schools at that time, which would bring that up to close to sixty million mark, and build two that year. So, that's just, it depends on what you wanna submit that first and second year.
I think what we gotta do is agree on, we're all focused on these seven projects, and we wanna get these seven projects approved. And as far as the monies go, we can play numbers all we want to, as far as what it takes to make it look good, that's what I think you're getting at there by, you know, these numbers, we can make this year look better than last year and year before, whatever. So, you know, I think we just need to focus on what projects we wanna do and submit them. Funding body figure out how they wanna fund it, what years they wanna fund it in.
I thought to go in between now and Thursday night, then. Of course, you, we all have access to Mr. Odom and Mr. Sandvik and Mr. Clardy, so any other comments, if you wanna hold them for Thursday, certainly have access to the central office for the next, uh, couple days. Odom, you wanna move to ten? Is there anything to do there?
Number ten, Ms. Barnes is gonna present. We're going to develop in the, starting in the winter, an aspiring administrators academy. This is not current principals or assistant principals, this is basically teachers, to try to begin to build our pool for future administrators in Ruffey County. And it's been a few years since we've done that, so I think we're, we're thinking about doing that, and they're, they're applying for that now. There's not a cost factor here, it's information for you, we teach in the sessions ourselves, she's gonna share with you the curriculum, the things that we're gonna be covering, the topics that we're covering in that development, so it's not something you need to vote on, because we're not asking for money or funding or anything for this, training, basically what we're doing there. The number eleven, this came from Ms. Noll and them, this is just information for you, for some budget calendar for fifteen, sixteen, which lists when we have to have our budget in, that sort of thing, which it might be. Number twelve, is Adult Education Critical Needs Grant. Ruffey County's Adult Education Program has been awarded a Critical Needs Grant of sixty-nine thousand five fifty for physical two thousand fourteen fifteen. The grant includes increasing the hourly pay rate for our part-time adult education teachers from twenty-one dollars to twenty-two dollars per hour. The first page in the tab is the grant budget, and the second page is the general proposed purpose school budget amendment that needs approval. Also, our hourly pay for night school and adult high school teachers has been tied to the adult education hourly rate. We are asking that the hourly rate for adult education, adult high school and night school be increased also to the twenty-two dollars per hour, effective January first, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Sandvik said, he didn't think that had changed since about two thousand, the night, so that's what this is. Recommend approval, motion to accept the Adult Education Critical Needs Grant of sixty-nine thousand five fifty, approve the related general purpose school budget amendment, and increase the hourly pay for adult education, adult high school and night school to twenty-two dollars per hour, effective January first, two thousand and fifteen, as presented.
Questions? During now, move on to thirteen.
Okay, textbook adoption committees. For qualifications and parameters for appointments to local textbook adoption committee, it's Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine six twenty-two oh seven C, and one, local boards of education shall appoint review committees to review the textbooks and instructional materials proposed for adoption, and shall make their adoption upon recommendation of such committees. These committees shall be set up by grade and subject matter fields, and composed of teachers or supervisors, and teachers and parents with children enrolled in the local education agency at the time of appointment to a committee. The local board may also appoint experts in the grade level or subject matter field for which textbooks and instructional material are to be reviewed. Experts may be college professors or credentialed subject matter specialists. The board shall determine the number of members of the committee based upon the relative size of the local education agency. Teachers and supervisors who serve on the committee shall be teaching or supervising the respective grades or subject at the time of appointment. Committee shall be composed by grade or groups of grades, arranged so that the committee may consider an entire series of books if it should so desire, provided that in all cases, the teachers and supervisors appointed to the committees shall be licensed to teach in the state with endorsements in the subject matter or grade level for which textbooks or instructional materials are being reviewed. Teachers and supervisors shall have three or more years of experience as teachers or supervisors in the public school, and three members of the committee authorized in this section shall serve for the length of time that the adoption process for which they're appointed lasts. Recommend approval, motion for the board to approve the record of names and qualification of members of local textbook selecting committees for K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12, as presented. Let me say something else, we did provide you also with a copy of the TCA law that actually does not go into effect until January first, two thousand and fifteen, so it's about three weeks away when, when this kicks in, and the wording here is straight out of that law also, but Ms. McLeod got that for us, it's LexisNexis, it's this sheet, with some of the things that's been pulled out, what's on here is in the yellow. Let me tell you something else that's going on with the conversation across the state in dealing with this, is I talked to other directors. Number one, we do not have standards from which to adopt a textbook. Tennessee does not currently have set standards, you know, that's where we are. So, what directors are saying, we don't, do not wanna adopt a math textbook to provide to teachers and students, we don't know what the standards are. So, we made a contact, Mr. Zegel made a contact with the State Department of Education, and said, hey, we don't, we don't wanna adopt a textbook, we don't know what the standards are, whether the textbook's obviously a land or not. And they said that you've got to adopt to get the money. Now, the monies are seventy-something dollars per student, right?
As far as the actual, that's a plan.
Right.
But as far as state money, you get, just under.
Fifty-nine dollars per student.
You can't buy that.
Two point four million dollars.
Okay. So, here's what the state said, in order for them to give us the fifty-nine dollars, we have to adopt. So, my recommendation to you probably is going to be, if we get committees in place and do that, we can adopt, we can approve, in their terms, adopt all of the vendors. We don't have to buy the books, but the state will send us the money to match that if we adopt the vendors, because that's the process we have to do, is do an adoption. We'd have to come back with you after standards are set, we'll be asking the commission, which may be one of the toughest things, to carry over an unappropriated service, the monies that we have into adopt math textbook, and then when we get standards, then we can pick the name of the book, or whatever it is that we want to support that. So, the real, the real issue is, I just, I don't recommend adopting a math book, we do not have standards, but we cannot forego getting the monies from the state for that. So, we have, as we do with any other motion, we've given you a list of names and people, and, and you have copies of those. I think we made you, Ms. Mackles made you a separate copy of, these are people, been contacted and all, but it's certainly the board's option, is what you choose to do with this motion, or any other questions you'd like to ask. Kinda brings you up to where we are, I think, today, and the same struggle other districts are having with it.
So, we do have to select a publisher? Is that what you?
We have to make an adoption, and you have to do the adoption, basically, from the state. We're saying, adopt all publishers.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, because, you know, you probably don't remember, when that thing comes out in a spreadsheet, your adoption list, it's got.
Right.
It's hall.
Right.
And everybody, all, and it goes all the way down through there. So, the committee's recommendation to you, probably in March, when it has to turn it in, around April fifteenth or something, is we adopt all publishers, not buy any at all. But then when we, and the state will approve that, that's what they're telling us, they will approve that, and then we come back, and if they set the standards in June, July, or whatever it is, then this same committee needs to, we need to get back together and say, okay, which textbook now best matches? say, okay, which textbook now best matches the standards that we're being required to teach and that you're going to test?
If we're going to adopt all available books.
I think it'll be everything on that list.
Right.
The state textbook commission produces a list.
Right. If we adopt all of those, then is our selection, because I'm going to say it, we've got adoption and then selection, is if we adopt these, then is our selection restricted to what we've adopted when we actually make purchase?
Can I explain it a little bit better? What we have is, we currently have a set of Tennessee state standards that are uncertain. We have standards, standards that we're teaching now. We have standards set for next year. But we have legislators that are threatening or posturing to change some of those standards. So there's no reason to adopt a math textbook that we're going to keep in our classrooms for the next six years with the uncertainty we have around our current set of standards. So when I contacted the state, the procedure and what they've done in the past is, is you must adopt, but you do not have to purchase to get that funding. So we have to adopt and what they've told us that we needed to do was to adopt the entire list and then we'll select from that list. But to answer your question, yes, you do have to select from the adopted list, but there's, there's no other way to do that unless we just adopted every book that was out there on or off that list. That, the state has also changed their commission. They have a new commission of ten members that they're going to compile based on regulations on the same state law, where they'll provide a better list than what they have been doing in the past. There's also many more regulations and procedures that they have to follow, including with validity and truth in advertisement of those books as well. So once again, we're required to adopt in order to get the funding of two point four million dollars, right, Mr. Sandvik?
Yes.
And, but we don't have to purchase until we know when our standards are set, whenever they're there. But that has to be done in order, otherwise we lose two point four million dollars.
I guess I'm struggling really to understand this, put it in perspective. When you say adopt and the statute says that the committee is going to, yeah, the review committees review the textbooks, instructional materials for adoption and shall make their adoption upon the recommendation of such committees. So we are looking at a list of books, not just publishers, correct?
Yes, we're looking at the entire list of books that that commission will generate for us, the new commission that's been developed by the legislators.
Okay, so the math textbooks or the, the adoption year that's coming up is when?
It's this coming year. We'll adopt not, we'll adopt for the following year.
Okay. So in what we're looking at as far as potential changes that might be coming down the road in the standards, correct me if I'm wrong, with mathematics, could be as drastic a difference of what we've got now with the Common Core standards versus going back to a more traditional teaching of mathematics. So my question is, how can these publishers possibly submit books for review when we don't even know what kind of teaching methods and standards those are going to be based off of?
Great question. With the things that they're, the way the publishers now compile their books is electronic. So they're looking at individual standards. And when Tennessee sets, or if we change our standards, that can be changed immediately. And, and this standard, 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 standard will be added to the book. Things will be taken out of the book that they're there. The majority of the systems that Mr. Odom and I've spoken to are going to do this, are looking to do the same procedure in order to not purchase a book where we have a, a book or a text that is not aligned at all with the standards that we're requiring our teachers to teach. But the new, with the technology the way it is, the textbook companies can change their books drastically from year to year to year. And if they're looking at selling these in the state of Tennessee, which they do want Tennessee, they'll make those changes as standards change. We don't foresee huge changes in standards, but that's possible.
Well, I would, I would think that if we, if Common Core is truly eliminated, if that happens, that at least based on my understandings of the standards and the difference in the, in the methods of teaching of Common Core, I would think that there would very possibly be some drastic, could be some drastic changes. So I guess I'm still, perhaps I'm, I'm in the slow group tonight, but I'm still trying to wrap my brain around how we could approve textbooks and then they later change them. I mean, we adopted one set, but then they change them had been streamed. And I am concerned, you know, based on past history with the adoption process and the timeline, that, okay, well, you, we're recommending then that the committee that's appointed, go ahead and just adopt everything so we can get our money, I mean essentially, right?
Yeah, otherwise we lose two point four million. But it also gives us the greatest option. Once again, there's never a perfect textbook aligned with our standards, never. But it gives us the option of selecting the best one once we know what those are, those are. I mean, if we select one based on the current standards, it may not be what the future standards, and it may be book X instead of book Y.
Okay. So what about the timeline then as far as the actual selection? I mean, when we, if we're looking at a two thousand and fifteen sixteen adoption year, I mean, even if, is the committee going to review that, all of the textbooks then?
Yes.
That are on that adoption list that they're approving?
We review all textbooks.
Okay.
I'm not sure we'll have a book in place by two thousand and sixteen.
Well, and that was, because if they do change the standards, I don't know how you could possibly do that.
I mean, I think we may have to start the process of, of doing that and you wouldn't get them till the, the next year simply because of the process with the state, when the committee, the state, whether it's what the governor's proposing or what the legislation proposes, when they set the standards, when, when those are picked, they have to then, unless they change the law, go to the state board of education.
Right. The beauty of this one is, is that this is only our fifth year. Next year would be our sixth year.
You're not behind.
We've only had this current book for five years. We would be shortchanging it based on the state's changing of adoption cycle by one year, shortchanging it. So it has to be provided by the textbook company for this additional year. So we could hold off one additional year and still have the book guaranteed to us.
Are the math books that we're currently using then, are they aligned with the Common Core standards?
It's on the grade level. Some of the grade levels are very poorly aligned with our current Tennessee state standards. Yes, ma'am.
It was five years ago before much Common Core was in place.
Yes, it was four years ago.
It wouldn't be very much in it.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
You know, because it, I mean, you're, like I say, we're in the fifth year.
So how are we teaching to those standards then if our texts are not in alignment? Are we using additional supplemental materials?
Our coordinators and our specialists are providing additional materials, instructional, that we've been doing for the past three years. And it's just specific grade levels.
Teach the standards, not the textbooks.
Right.
Because you're not going to find a textbook that's totally aligned with Tennessee. They're, they're close, but they're much better than they used to be now that they're electronic. It used to be, it used to be California, Texas and Florida chose the textbooks because they, they bought the most and they published them. But that was before they had the electronic ability to go in and modify textbooks on the fly. And they can't do that now.
Any of our textbooks now are becoming paper, like a newspaper even, say Carnegie with our Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two. And that's a shift in textbooks where it's not that hard bound and we're going to have to learn to look at it like that. It's not a book that we're going to carry around in a backpack for six years. Those are disposable, weekly or monthly sets of lessons that'll be coming. And so those are very easily adjusted as our standards change. And that, that, there's a beauty to that there.
Are the publishers still going to have the same kind of bond restrictions and everything on them that they did? Do we know when they proposed the history books? Because I remember that was a stumbling block for some of the smaller publishers that weren't able to, to get in the bidding process.
They are, they're going to have some. There's some, some amounts that have changed. But if you want to look at all that, it's a public charter number, let me get my, my glasses here, nine eighty-one. It's Senate Bill number sixteen oh two. And that's House Bill number twenty-two forty-nine. There's some more numbers after that, but if you look that up, it's a, it starts dealing with the LEA at page seven at the bottom of that page and deals through page eight on some of those others. The first half of that or first six pages of it deals with how the state's going to set up that new ten-member commission and the requirements that they have for them and the selection and their process.
Familiar with that.
That was signed in to law on May twenty-second of this current year by Governor Haslam.
What you have tonight is the local portion. They, they brought this out, forty-nine six twenty-two oh seven. There's another section for the state textbook commission.
Right.
Which is some different criteria.
That forty-nine.
So they still have to vet the textbooks at the state level with this newly structured commission?
New commission.
Right, before it comes to the LEA.
Yes, ma'am, there's a huge number of requirements and, and changes in.
Right.
As well, that, that has been brought on by the public input over the past year or so.
Okay.
And, and once again, the LEAs, that forty-nine dash six twenty-two oh seven C one is where it starts.
Okay. Okay, so I have more questions. The list that we've been presented with then for the committee recommendations, I'd really like if someone could walk me through how this list was composed. How did we vet these candidates? And, I mean, I understand from the statute, you've got essentially three different areas, if you will, that need to be on the committee. You've got your, your teachers and your supervisors, which, and there's certain stated criteria as far as the length of time that they're taught and so on. But then you've got your parents and your subject matter experts. And it, you know, of course, we're being asked to approve the list, but we don't know anything about these people.
I can do that. What our coordinators do is they select their teachers, it says teachers or supervisors and that's one group, and they select them based on the criteria that's set on them as the, how many years they have to have taught, they're currently teaching those subject areas within those grade levels that they'll be selecting from as well. And then the parents were selected by the criteria that's set up by the state law as well. It says that they have to currently have students that are attending the public school within that adoption cycle. So we couldn't select parent X out here to be placed on that unless they have currently themselves have a child that is in our LEA in that grade structure band. So that's set there and they select those. What we do is we talk to administrators, talk to people that are involved in the schools and they make recommendations to the coordinators, coordinators vet them and talk to those parents and have made those selections there. We've chosen three from each grade brand, I'm sorry, grade band, three for K through five, three for six, eight and three for the seven, twelve, I mean, nine, twelve high school. The experts also have a set criteria that's set by the law as well. They have to be, it says they can be chosen from college professors or experts that are currently working in that field.
Right.
So they were selected in that way as well. Of course, the people have to be willing to give their time as well.
Sure. I guess one of the things, and I'm wondering too about the parents and the experts again is, were they given, I mean, to me, this, this, one of the reasons and the philosophy behind adding these criteria to the process was to allow parents or the community to have an opportunity to have input into these textbooks. So my question is, did we, did we publish or did we make it open to, for parents to have an opportunity to come forward and say, I'm interested in being on this textbook committee?
Yeah, administrators did ask groups of parents that they knew that were willing to give that time and those types of things. We actually asked Segal Elementary, or Segal Middle School at one point, we had over nine parents that we had contacted there, you know, that we thought may want to do that and, and not a single one. We talked to students at Rock Springs Middle School as well. We even opened it up to a large number of middle school parents. We had a real tough time at getting some of those as well. But we didn't publish in a paper or make that known throughout our school system. We just asked for principals and.
So essentially, they were handpicked by principals or administrators as far as that they thought.
Yes, ma'am. Those people were selected based on their involvement in the schools. And they have students in the school.
Right.
You as a board can change any of that. You add additional people and you have a right to make that change. We, we just have to make some, we have to make a recommendation to get a motioning thing on there, but you have a right to change any that you want to change. And that's not, that's not the issue.
As long as we're staying within those regulations the state has set for us.
Right. Yeah, but again, I, I think there needs to be, there should have been more opportunity for parents to have knowledge about it so, because we may have folks out there that are subject matter experts or that would be terrific at doing this kind of job that never had the opportunity to even know about it.
Right, absolutely. You're correct. We can make recommendations to us as, you know, of people that you want on that as well.
One of the things in the state textbook commission law, it does have to, you have to make it, I think it's either available online or something for parents and the public to see and review.
State commission's the only group that has citizens at large and they use it that were non-parents and not connected.
There's one from like each region of the state, right?
But that's the state commission.
Right. Thank you.
Let's assume this works perfectly, which I'm certain that it will. And all these people serve at all three levels. I assume they elected chairperson out of the list that's there.
Usually your coordinator.
Supervisor.
Kind of.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I, I'm, I'm a big believer in, in, you know, we've, we've got some excellent people and this is what they do. They teach it, they're familiar with the curriculum and what the state requires, et cetera. And then to overrule them or, I don't know, playing too much about it doesn't seem like it's a very good use of our money, but I guess it may be. But let's assume this, this goes perfectly well. I assume they begin meeting at some point this spring. Is that, is that, is that fair?
In January.
In January, okay. And, and they have a list of books, then we're going to approve those here, the whole, everything. And then they're going to begin to review every, every one of them that has second and third and three through five math and so forth. And then at some point, they make a recommendation on a textbook that we would use for six years and they would come to us seeking approval for that? Well, I, I'm going to tell you ahead of time, I'm telling you now, whatever today is, December nine, I want to see the book. I'm just going to, if I have to come in and see it, you know, during the week or something, okay. But before I vote yes or no on any, or any book adoption, I guess they're, are they approved all at once? Or?
They are. And it'll be a number of books, but we most certainly can make copies available for you.
Okay. I appreciate that very much. And I know, well, okay.
Certain publishers are, are concentrated on the elementary. And then you have different publishers, very often they'll concentrate on the middle and high school. I mean, the same publishing company very rarely handles the elementary and the middle and the high. They just have their, their specialty areas that they do. But what we're saying to you basically this year is, I don't, I don't foresee unless something changes drastically in legislature, that they come back with a single book this year. In fact, we're not recommending that to them because how are you going to align a book when you don't know what the standards?
Right, right.
That's where we are. We're actually doing a process to get the monies.
We're talking about putting this, if everything worked perfectly, which was how it started, that, that we would have a book in every grade level in math in a student's hands, August of two thousand and sixteen. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
You also.
There'll be two processes. It'll have an additional process this time because we're going to adopt all, but we're going to select and of course when we select.
Understood.
We'll be coming back to you as well.
Understood. Thank you.
This time next year, you also are going to be approving a different one because next year's adoption includes some career and technical education books. Normally you have one, you know, you can go online and see what's in, where you are in that six-year cycle, what's adopted. It just so happens that the one coming for the next year is not a major reading, English or math or social studies or science. Science is add another year. It's, it's career and technical education books mainly and all. So if you had a year that you really needed to roll over, this, I mean, that hit pretty good and that you're not trying to adopt all English books, at the same time you'd be trying to purchase all math. It's a, it's a down year in what you have to, in their cycle.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Zago.
Welcome. Anything else? General discussion. Anybody have anything?
I think the blue line ought to be seventy-one million.
Okay.
I just want to say that I, I agree with Mr. Young that we need to ask for what we need. We're not keeping up or we wouldn't have one hundred and forty-six portables in this county. So we need classroom space and the more portables we can get rid of at a time, the better. better.
I think the consensus, as long as I've been on the board, has always been that we would like to get our students inside a building and not inside a portable, permanent building.
Just like to mention one last thing, Dr. Hewitt and Ms. Haley, I know she's gone, but just commend both of you on how well your schools, how clean they were.
Yes.
Both of you. It feels good to see.
I will. Would like to thank all the board members for taking time out of your Saturday to several hours to walk just about every inch of both of those campuses. I've invited Mayor Burgess to visit both schools and he has, he has accepted. So Mr. Odom will be there also and so, okay. He's going to tag along too. So we'll, we'll make sure the mayor gets to see everything that we witnessed Saturday morning. Anything else? Is everybody back here on Thursday? And without anything else, we stand adjourned.